The city of South Fulton's virtual city council special call meeting on Thursday, December thirty twenty twenty one at ten AM. Uh, Mr. Craig, would you give me the roll call, please?
Yes, this is a roll call. The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Yeah.
Honorable Catherine F. Wow, District One. The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two. All right, thank you. The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three. The Honorable Naima Gilard, District Four. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. The Councilman for. Thank you. The Honorable Councilmember Khalid. And the Honorable Mark Baker. Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, before we get into the agenda items and the presentation from, uh, Dr. Paxton and Matthew Coleman. Let me, uh, uh, just say that both of these presenters have another engagement. Uh, with Fulton County, because we have another meeting right after this one. So if you could, uh, allow them to get their presentation in and ask your question as expeditiously as we can. Uh, to get them to their next appointment. So at this time, um, is Dr. Paxton or Matthew, are you there?
Yes, this is, this is Doug Schuster. I'll take the PowerPoint. I'll, I'll take the PowerPoint to start.
Okay, Doug, that's good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. We're just trying to get Dr. Paxton on the line. She's having a couple of difficulties, but we'll start with, uh, the overview of where we are and what the roadmap looks like ahead, sir. And then from there, Dr. Paxton should be able to join us at that point, and we'll be able to cover some additional items with her, sir.
Thank you, Matthew. Doug, go right ahead.
Thank you for having us, Mayor Williams. I wish I had better news to share. Um, also, the, the Epi team for the county has been overwhelmed, and so I was hoping to prevent. South Fulton data, but I will tell you it's the, the news that I'm communicating for the county. Um, it is, is just as prevalent in South Fulton, and I'll try to give you as much information as I can. So starting with kind of the case comparison, um, last week, we had a seven day average of four hundred cases. This week, we're at sixteen seventy-eight. We had a record day yesterday with two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven cases in the county. And we are six hundred and eighty percent worse than we were fourteen days ago. If you look at the chart on the far, far right at the top, you can see the height is well surpassed. Past our, our previous highs, we've almost by the end of the week, we will be doubled our previous high. Um, you can see the health of the, the county and the state, the darker colors show the more, the, the sicker, um, counties. Uh, you can see that Fulton County has gotten very dark and that, uh, around the Atlanta metro area, very, very, um, huge amount of cases. Uh, one important thing to notice here too, United States had a record day yesterday too, with over a half a million new cases. Next slide. Even worse than our case is the percent positives that are people that are getting tested. Our previous high in the county was, um, sixteen point one percent. And as of yesterday, Fulton County was at twenty-nine point one. So we're just under thirty percent. Um. That is a definite sign of Omicron, where it was expected to go into the twenties. Uh, because it is, it is twelve times more infectious than previous versions of the virus. Hospitals are at twenty-five point eight. Next slide. Um, and then I, I know everybody's concerned about getting tests. Um, you can see, uh, if you look at this, this is our weekly test totals for the Fulton County Spox, um, testing centers. And you can look at the one week change quadrupled, um, and along, so. With everything going on with testing and people wanting and, and concern and the high infection rate. Uh, we are trying our best through getting through sick employees, manning and staffing problems and traffic problems and, and weather today. To get people through the best that we can, but you can see multiplying four times in one week is, is pretty incredible. We just encourage people to, to show patience. That people are out there working in, in bad weather, trying to do their jobs. Next slide. We do some predictive stuff for the county, and as you can see, um, this is for the life of the incident cases. Um, our previous high was seven hundred and forty back in January of last year, and we peaked at about four hundred and ninety cases per day. Uh, this summer, uh, we are currently at sixteen seventy-eight and projected to be beginning of February, around three thousand cases per day. So we're about halfway there to as bad as it's gonna get. And, and, and it's. Unless this is without any mitigation efforts, but anyway, the, the forecast is pretty dire for cases. Next slide. One of the other disturbing things is you can see these are our hospitalization census numbers. The orange line is our most probable. Um, we are tracking on the, 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 to the left of our worst case scenario. Our previous high was one thousand patients, um, in January of last year, and then. Um, seven hundred and nineteen, we're at six twenty-seven today, and just to let people know, we had ninety-nine additional patients overnight. Many of these people are, uh, juvenile or younger. Choa Hospital is full. It's the highest COVID, uh, amounts we've had in children. And once again, the lion's share of the people progressing to the hospital. Um, are, uh, patients that are not vaccinated. Um, and, and, and we need to just really push that that is generally the best defense, uh, we have. For COVID. If you take vaccination out of the picture, the, um. Severity of, of COVID is about the same between Delta and Omni. I know you've heard a lot about. Omicron being less severe. Well, that's only if you're vaccinated. It's about the same if you're unvaccinated. Next slide.
Uh, if I could, if you could stand outside one second, uh, just want to add some color commentary here. So. Yesterday I did send out a message from the State Department of Public Health, uh, asking all citizens, uh, to not inundate emergency rooms. Uh, if you have, um, if you need a test, please take advantage of testing locations. We are overloading our emergency rooms with people that, uh, are looking to get a test. That is not what's intended. We are actually causing a pretty significant problem to the system if we continue to do that. I believe Chief Jones will probably echo my next comments when I say this, it's a cascade effect. If people go ahead and surge into our emergency rooms, ambulances do not have the ability to offload. They then have structures that spark on a wall for an extended period of time, which then goes ahead and causes a problem in the field of being able to have units available for transporting. And that does turn into a bigger problem. So, uh, we have staffing concerns in the pre-hospital environment as well as the hospital environment. Uh, the governor did make a release, uh, yesterday that he will be trying to surge our staffing support in hospitals using, utilizing, um. Travel nurses and some other travel clinical providers, uh, hospitals in our jurisdiction have put requests in. We have sent that to the state as of yesterday. Uh, to make sure that they can get, take advantage of any additional staff that they can, but. The staffing shortages that they're seeing is, uh, due to attrition, people leaving early from, uh, just burnout, retiring early. And also people that are COVID positive that aren't able to come back to work. So it's starting to turn into, um. A recipe for a not so pleasant, uh, ride, uh, up to the top of this next wave for us. And we need everyone's help to try to preserve our emergency rooms and our hospitals at this point in time. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, we also do predictive stuff on deaths. Um, I want to dispel a, a pretty popular myth that myth that, um, Omicron does not, um, cause death. Um, our predictive stuff on deaths have been almost right on top of the most probable lines since the beginning of the incident. Deaths are a lagging indicator. Um, generally people present with cases, testing. And then, uh, ten days later, they may progress to the hospital. And then four to five weeks later, um, they could possibly progress to, um, uh, a ventilator and then death. And so we, we have not seen the effects of Omicron on our death projection yet, but that, that's total between now and. And April first, uh, we're looking at approximately a hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty more individuals that could pass potentially from, um, COVID nineteen. Next slide. Lot of colors here, just bring your attention to the top part of the, of the, um. Slide deck here is the purple is, uh. Omicron and the orange is Delta. So we still have two pretty, um, almost equal shares around the country. In Georgia, we are at about seventy-five percent Omicron, about twenty-five percent Delta. And so, um, they're expecting Omicron to become the more dominant as it, it is. Is the most dominant, but to continue its surge in the United States. Next slide. The CDC has masking guidance that's been in place now since, um, late June. Um, high transmission is anything over a. Um, which is to. Let me try. All new cases for a seven day period. Uh, we are currently.
So Doug, maybe you could try to, uh, just see if you can get more stable, but as you see here, uh, we did try to go ahead and showcase how the CDC comes up with the guidance to. Determine masking guidance, and what you see on the screen here is the different categories in the bottom. Uh, we have been, uh, wavering between, uh, moderate and sustain, uh, substantial for quite some time. But it is a coupling of two types of variables that gets us to the high transmission state. So the cases per hundred thousand, you'll see that there over one thousand eleven hundred plus percent positive is pushing to thirty percent. So based upon those two, we are now in the high transmission, uh, rate. Uh, previously, we had different values percent positives versus, uh, one hundred, uh, the people, total cases per hundred thousand. The CDC always deferred to the most conservative aspect of that, so we would, that's why we fluctuated between the moderate and substantial. High transmission rate. So that's what you see on the screen right there. Let's move to the next slide. Uh, I'd like to bring Dr. Paxton into the conversation. This is based upon the new CDC COVID nineteen quarantine and isolation guidelines. There's a lot of confusion with this. And, uh, Dr. Paxton's been working diligently with her, uh, previous colleagues at the CDC. Uh, while she was there to make sure that we could, uh, kind of simplify some of the messages and be able to present it to you all. So. Dr. Paxton, I'd like to pass, uh, the baton to you at the moment.
Sure, absolutely. I hope people, I hope that my, um, uh, link is stable enough that I won't go in and out, but please do let me know if I, if I do. Uh, what the CDC has done very recently was to, uh, uh, put out revised quarantine and isolation guidelines. Pay part to actually to respond to the fact that, um, you know, there is, we have a raging epidemic and we need to, there's a, a lot of people, a lot of, um. Businesses and all that, including the hospital system, have been suffering with people who, um, you know, have to, who have become positive, have to, have to stay out for a while. And what the CDC has done is looked at, um, you know, the data, because, uh, the data has been accumulating, of course, over these, um, many months. To try to come up with the best sort of compromise between, uh, what one might consider is the gold standard of. Isolation quarantine and then what is the realities of life on earth for in the middle of a pandemic. So let me try to go, go through this now, but first let me explain a little bit of the thinking behind this. Um, what we do know is that somebody who has been infected with COVID. Test positive, usually by the tenth day after they have tested positive. In the most circumstances, they are no longer infectious. Okay? So that is the reason for the ten days that we have already had. I mean, that, that, that's, that, that, that we've actually been following for a while, because. Even though a person's PCR might remain positive for up to like ninety days after a positive test. Uh, that's because it can pick up dead particles of the virus and the person is not actually trans, um, uh, uh, infectious or contagious. So the, that's the reason for the ten days for people who have, who are actual contacts. Meaning that they were exposed to somebody who is positive. What we know from the data have known for a long time is generally. Whether, if they're going to turn positive from that contact, usually they'll do that within the fourteen days, the first fourteen days. So that is the reason why previously we told people who were contacts that they needed to isolate for a full fourteen days. Because at the end of the fourteen days, if they hadn't turned positive, then they were unlikely to be, uh, to be infected. Now, with the new realities of life on the ground, with these exploding numbers, and with what we do know about. Uh, particularly the Omicron variant, um, variant, is that it tends to also act very quickly. And so people tend to. Get manifest this symptoms a little bit earlier. The infectious period for somebody who's infected, who's infected is usually from about two days before they have, they start having symptomed. To five days. That is the, that is the most infectious time that they have. For people who are vaccinate, who are unvaccinated, their trend, their period of, of, of having, um, of being, um. Infectious is actually longer by a badly, by about two or three days. It's longer than if you're vaccinated. But this is the, what these guidelines are trying to do is to take all of that into account. And this is what they have, they have come up with. For people who have actually tested positive. They have simplified it. So basically, oh, everyone pretty much gets treated the same. Okay? In that they must isolate for the first five days. Absolutely. So that means. Be staying away from other people and not coming into contact with, uh, you know, with other people for five, four, five days. After the five days, if their symptoms, if they were, if they were always without symptoms, that's great. Or if they have to, if they are, if their symptoms have been getting better. Then after five days, they are allowed to stop isolating and to go back in, in, out in public. But they must strictly wear a mask. And the reason they have to is because of what I just told you. Is that even though most people will no longer be infectious after five days, there is, there is a significant proportion who still will be. And so that's why we say, well, listen, if we're, if you're going to leave the house, you have to wear a mask, you have to strictly mask up. For the remaining five days. So for this whole, for this total of ten days. However, if on that fifth day, the person still has a fever, that's still, that's a bad sign. Or if their symptoms are getting worse, then they still need to keep isolating. Do not come out if you have a fever or if your symptoms are not getting, are, are, are getting worse. Okay? Now for quarantine, that is what we, the term we use for people who have been exposed. But they're not positive. They've just been exposed to someone who's positive. That's what we talk about when we're saying quarantine. So if pretty much, again, we're, you know, we're people, for people who are unvaccinated. And for people who have been vaccinated, but they have not been boosted, if they, if it's been more than six months since their last. Since their second, since their second, uh, shot, we actually are, uh, counseling the same thing. This is basically for ease. In that they should also isolate for those five days. And then after the five days, they can come out of isolation, but they should wear a mask. And what we advise is that people should get tested at the five day point after their exposure. That's to find out whether or not they have themselves turned positive. If they've turned positive, then they move into the other category of the actual, uh, the top category of people who have actually, uh, tested positive. Now, if you have been, if you've done the right thing and you are. Fully vaccinated and boosted, then you actually do not have to isolate. You just need to wear the mask for ten days and get a, a COVID test five days after your exposure. So, um, as again, as this is all kind of a concession to sort of the realities of life. And the, and it hinges on people being, um, trustworthy and following the guidelines. We do not want people just saying, I'm out of isolation and then pulling off their mask and running around, because we do know that there is a. A proportion of people who will still be infectious, um, at that, you know, at that time. So that's why it's so important to emphasize that people. Do need to continue where the, this, this mask wearing, if they're out of isolation for the full ten days since they tested positive. Or since they were exposed to someone who tested positive. Now, I'm gonna stop right there, um, but, um, we can, uh, I, I, I should also, um, we'll have, there is a slide, I believe, that Doug will show in a second. That talks about, um, the efficacy of the vaccines for people who are fully, uh, vaccinated and for those who are, uh, six months. Out of their second shot and then get boosted and we'll show, and they'll show that. But I just wanted to try and briefly explain these, um, the rationale behind these, uh, isolation and quarantine guidelines. Uh, it can be confusing. So when we get to the, when we get to the, um, a question and answer session, I'm happy to entertain more questions about this if it, if it was, um, uh, difficult to follow. So I'm gonna hand back to Doug and Matt.
Thank you, Dr. Paxton. Uh, Matthew?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, I just want to make sure you're back on the line.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, let's progress the slide, sir. Moderator.
Dr. Paxton?
Sure. Okay. So I think, um, uh, this is, this is a great slide stolen from the, uh, director of the NIH. And it basically just shows a graphically what we know about the vaccines in terms of Omicron. And so you'll see that for people with two shots, uh, could that are considered, you know, fully vaccinated. We saw that against the original virus, that their antibody levels were fair, were pretty high. But when Omicron came, uh, into the, uh, picture, that the antibodies again, that, um, uh, effective against Omicron. Had actually decreased. And what that translates to is that we found that, um, uh, with, uh, when, with the Omicron variant. The efficacy of the, um, of the vaccine was a fell to roughly thirty to thirty-five percent. Okay? But for people who then got the booster shot. It brought their levels back up to almost what it had been against, um, uh, the original virus. So you see that when, when you get a booster shot. Not only does it increase your antibody levels, um, of, um, against the original viruses to even higher than they were. But it also, uh, increases the, um, uh, antibodies against the Omicron variant by, uh, twenty-five times. And so it brings that efficacy up to about seventy-five, uh, percent again. And again, when I say the efficacy, that is against getting infected at all. Okay? Even the vaccines, even with just the two shots without a booster. Are still a very effective at the important stuff of keeping people from getting hospitalized or being intubated or dying. They have retained throughout remarkable efficacy against very bad outcomes. But if you get boosted, you are in addition, you have, uh, greater protection against getting infected in the first place. So there is every single reason to go ahead and get your booster if you are more than six months. After post, having gotten your second shot, then you should absolutely get, get boosted. If you haven't reached the second, the, 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 that, that six month mark yet, you're, you're fine, because you still have, we do know that you still have enough protection. But when you do hit the six month mark, I would urge everybody to get, to get boosted. So. I hope that that is a clear explanation, or at least the graphic. Yeah, well, I hope that, that at least gets that, that point across. So back to you, Doug.
Thank you, Dr. Paxton. Appreciate that. Moderator, next slide, please. Just want to touch on some of our vaccination, uh, program information for you all, so you, you can kind of see where we are planning. Uh, the joint team of emergency management and board of health and, and what we're trying to achieve. So herd immunity, you've heard Dr. Paxton speak about that in the past. We're looking at about seventy-five percent of our eligible population in Fulton County is what we're trying to vaccinate. So that's six hundred eighty-seven thousand individuals. Uh, the total eligible population is nine hundred and sixteen thousand and change. Uh, of that seventy-five percent gets us to the number that I just shared with you. The thing that, uh, everyone should go ahead and be proud of, we're not there yet, but five hundred ninety-two thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-eight individuals have been fully vaccinated in our jurisdiction. So sixty-five percent. Uh, we're ten percent way of our goal and we'll continue to strive to get there. And that means that we still need to get nine ninety-five thousand more individuals to get to that number. Of the five hundred ninety-two thousand individuals that were fully vaccinated, we'd like to report that thirty-six point one percent have received their booster dose to two hundred and thirteen. Basically, what Dr. Paxton said, that number needs to get higher faster. And that's what we want to do is make sure we have availability for folks to get the vaccine. So please. Help us amplify the message about getting your booster. It's extremely important. Moderator, next slide, please. So in order to do that, we are increasing our capacity. We're actually increased it by sixty-two point five percent, uh, by adding additional fixed, uh, sites into our metrics. So we are, have, uh, the forty-seven hundred location, which is in the north, the aviation location, which is central, the Stonewall Tel location. Which is, uh, right down by the South Annex, as well as the College Park Board of Health, Adamsville Board of Health, as well as Ten Park Place. Uh, which is the Board of Health's main facility. And then we still keep two mobile units available to be able to go ahead and find hotspots, low uptake vaccination areas. We're really trying to saturate those markets. And the beautiful thing about our new model going into next year is that the teams that we'll have at these fixed sites are mobile teams. So if we start seeing a waning of, um, demand, we'll go ahead and put those teams in vehicles and get them out to the community, push them into areas. That we see low uptake, but as of this, at this time, excuse me, we are fully booked when it comes to individuals before we added these additional. Uh, appointments to be able to take advantage of vaccines. However, we still have a lot of capacity at the Stonewall Tel location. And we need to ensure that our residents in the South Fulton area know that's available and take advantage of that. Uh, right now, that is the one that has the most availability and we just love to go ahead and see that place overwhelmed every day. That's what I would love to be able to see. Next slide, moderator. So we want to make sure we increase options for evening vaccination opportunities. We have done that. Uh, we're one of the only jurisdictions in the state of Georgia that is doing that. And, uh, we're proud to say that is, is, uh, actually proven out to be very effective. So we're ensuring that we have evening opportunities at all of our mobile, excuse me, all of our fixed locations and we rotate through that. The Board of Health has done an incredible job of securing a health equity grant, um, and other funding sources that the county has to be able to go ahead and. um, and other funding sources that the county has to be able to go ahead and continue this response. And they're leveraging a contract they have that Core Epi Team, uh, used to do case investigation, is now doing homebound tests, uh, testing for homebound individuals, excuse me, in vaccination for those folks. So, uh, Board of Health is being as nimble as possible and reallocating their resources to achieve the mission. We'll still work with them on a unified advertising, community outreach program. Black Cross is a partner that we have that, uh, has done some incredible work, um, with us to ensure that we're getting the message out to, uh, locations that have, once again, poor uptake. And we are continuing to push incentives. We're looking that for individuals that need a first or second dose. That's the only way to get through this. I know that you've heard that there'll probably be some changes as to what fully vaccinated means. Uh, it'll probably mean that you have to have the booster, uh, to get to that point. So a lot of those conversations are occurring at this particular time. But two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of incentives has gone out to twenty-seven hundred individuals and we'll continue to do that at our fixed sites to make sure that we can find anyone and motivate them to go ahead and get this vaccine so that we can get out of this infinity loop that we are currently in. Next slide, moderator. Testing, we talked about that today. We have three fixed sites of specimen collection in our jurisdiction. Uh, as you know, traffic management, security has been a very big problem. Uh, we have actually leveraged the support of the sheriff, uh, the marshal. Um, we have asked the city of South Fulton to go ahead and support us as well. And we're appreciative of the efforts that they have been able to provide. We know everyone is short-staffed right now due to COVID and other demands. Uh, we actually put a request into the state for National Guard support. Regrettably, that will not be a quick fix at the earliest. We'll see it as, at the latter part of next week. So until then, we have to go ahead and hunker down and do the best we can with the resources we have in place. So we'll continue to work with your police chief, as well as other police chiefs in their jurisdiction, the sheriff and the marshal, to see what we can do to achieve this mission. There's a home test kit program, we'll talk a little bit more about that on the, the mayor's coordination call today. Uh, but there, um, was initial program that was actually a piece that the Board of Health was able to get us in. It was a pilot program, yeah, that the feds ran, there was only two locations. One was Hawaii and the second was Fulton County. It's kind of interesting, I was born and raised in Hawaii and I'm currently working in Fulton County, so I'm gonna go ahead and take a little credit that my two places actually got it. Um, but eleven thousand test kits, uh, were distributed to school partners and a hundred eighty thousand test kits were actually distributed to Fulton County residents through that program. Dr. Paxton and her team has actually been able to leverage seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from their equity grant to procure another forty-six thousand kits. And we're working up a plan to how properly distribute that, uh, in line with the equity grants guidance. Next slide, please. And with that, we'd like to go ahead and turn it back to, uh, Mayor Edwards for any questions that the council yourself may have. Uh, myself, Doug Schuster and Dr. Paxton would love to go ahead and answer any questions that you have. Thank you for the opportunity, once again, to speak with you all today.
Well, thank you, Doug, and thank you, Dr. Paxton, and thank you, Matthew. I know you have something else to do in a couple of hours, but I do wanna entertain the questions from the council. Mister Clerk, I can't see any hands here, can you help me out with that? Mister Clerk.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I do not see anyone in the queue.
I see, I'm sorry.
I do not see any hands raised at this point.
I see Mayor Pro Tim Willis has their hand up.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, I just wanted to know, uh, when are we going to have more home testing kits available? I see where Michael Thurman, um, in DeKalb County secured over fifteen thousand home testing kits for residents in his county. And, um, it appears they are hard to get in, in our county. So, uh, has anyone reached over to him and, and, and asked how he was able to get, where did he get these tests from and, and, um, how he could get that source, how we could get this, uh, resource available for our city, I mean, for our county, not our city, but for our county?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, hi, this is, uh, Dr. Paxton. I think, I'm sure it was very quick, you couldn't see it on the slide, but, uh, we will be talking more about that in the mayor's meeting today. But what we have done at the Board of Health is we, uh, took a rough profit, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the equity grant and we have purchased, um, uh, test kits, uh, home test kits about, which will be about roughly about forty-six thousand, which are supposed to arrive, um, you know, here, you know, to, today or tomorrow, we are just waiting for them to arrive. Um, and, uh, these will be allocated, uh, we're working on the distribution plan for those right now. We did pay for them out of our e- equity grant. Uh, the equity grant is designed, uh, to, um, help compensate for some of the discrepancies that we have, uh, you know, we've been, uh, hot COVID and highlighted, um, in, um, for certain communities here. So these, uh, tests, the priority for these tests is going to be, uh, for people who are living in areas where we have, um, high in, uh, high rates of infection, uh, low levels of vaccination, and of course, where there are these existing, um, uh, discrep-, you know, discrepancies in access and the like. So basically, we will let you all know, uh, when the tests are here and we are ready to distribute them. But, uh, this is, this is actually designed to be sort of the bridge between, um, the current situation and when, and the federal program. As many of you know, the, um, the, uh, US government has committed to supplying, uh, roughly five hundred million, um, home test kits, uh, but it is not expected that those will be available until maybe sometime in January. So we are doing this as a bridge to that, uh, until, to that time.
Well, I, I will tell you that the home test kits were very helpful for me. When I started getting symptoms, I did use a home test kit and I came back positive. So I went to the testing center the next day after being positive from the home test and, um, was given a rapid test, it was, came back positive and my PCR came back positive. So the test kit, home test kit was very helpful for me. And so I, I encourage, I want to get those in the hands of residents as soon as possible.
Mm-hmm. Uh, thank you, I see also there's a question in the chat about how long after a positive test can you get a booster? So what we generally say is that if somebody who has just been infected, if you, if you have tested positive, then generally, you know, about ninety days after, I mean, there's, there's no contraindication actually to getting boosted as soon as you feel better. So what we tell people is that, you know, when you're, you know, when you're feeling good and all that, you can go out and get your booster shot, that's not a problem. But, you know, if you've been infected, it's almost, almost, almost a little bit like a natural booster. So if you can't make it right away to get, you know, booster shot, you know, you know, it's usually the, any, any protection that you might be getting from the virus and the boosting effect, uh, usually that's strongest in the first ninety days after you've been, you've been, uh, you've tested positive. So my, my advice would be get boosted as soon as you can, you know, and certainly within the first three months, uh, the three months after you, you tested positive. Uh, the other question is, when will booster shots be available to those under sixteen years old? Uh, booster shots will be, I'm, will, uh, almost certainly be approved, um, for, um, those that are under sixteen. But remember, because only, it was only relatively recently that, uh, people have, that, uh, kids under sixteen have been eligible, most are not in that six month period after the second shot where they will need to be, will need, will be even fa- even be eligible for a booster. So I would just basically say, um, you know, just keep, keep your eye open, eyes open to this because we'll obviously announce that, uh, most people are not in that category yet because they haven't finished, uh, many, unfortunately, not enough have been getting their primary shots anyway. And many are not even in the post-six month period because we haven't, they have, it hasn't been available, uh, for that long.
Okay, Dr. Paxton, one, one question. One question from the chair. Um, you all mentioned that prior to this meeting, you didn't have all the information as it pertains to, uh, the city of South Fulton and, uh, yeah, based in the city of South Fulton. I think it's important that, uh, we as a citizen and a government body, that we know how, uh, how we're being affected in our municipality. Can those figures come out, uh, anytime soon or you have accessibility to them?
Can I answer that, Dr. Paxton?
Please, absolutely, thank you.
So, uh, the, the county Epi Team, every week on Wednesday produces an Epi Report and we share that and it definitely has city information embedded in there in like three or four pages. Um, they were just overwhelmed and we're working through the night and I didn't have it available. I didn't wanna share last week's information because it's so out of date with the Omicron spread. But, um, if you're not on our list that, that sends out the, if you go to the Board of Health website and look under Epi Reports, it definitely has the information broken down by municipality.
Okay, Doug, I really appreciate that. Do, uh, I, do you see anyone else, Mister Clerk?
There's a question in the chat, uh, apparently for a question from a resident on YouTube. How will Fulton County communicate with seniors who may not have internet access for the free home test kits? Um, well, what I would recommend in this, in, we, we will not be, uh, we're gonna do our best to, uh, make this information readily available through probably regular media, um, outreach. Um, but what I would also, uh, suggest particularly for seniors is, uh, we will absolutely be making sure that the, uh, people who run our senior citizen, uh, our senior centers and, uh, you know, who are most concerned in the activities that are, um, designated towards seniors are aware of this. And so if they, if any senior who does not have internet access could call, um, either the, uh, county hotline, that COVID hotline that, that we have available on them, uh, which we can, you know, publicize the, uh, the, the number for that, or they could probably just contact the senior, this, uh, the, the senior centers who could then give them some informa- some more information about the, um, the, uh, home test kits.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I do, I do not see any hands raised or anyone in the queue.
Thank you, well, thank you, uh, uh, Doug and, and Matthew and, and Dr. Paxton for this informative, uh, opportunity. I know you'll have, I'll see you all in about thirty minutes. I know you gotta go to another meeting, so at this time, I will let you all be dismissed from the meeting.
Thank you so much.
May I just, uh, provide a number that Dr. Paxton referenced?
Thank you.
It's the Fulton County COVID hotline, if I could, four zero four six one three eight one five zero. To repeat, the Fulton County COVID nineteen hotline is four zero four six one three eight one five zero.
Yeah, I just threw it in the chat, Matt.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, see you, see you in about thirty minutes.
Oh, yeah, remind everyone, tell everyone, get vaccinated, wear your mask indoors, okay? Don't wanna get that out there, all right then, bye-bye.
Back to Paxton. Mister Clerk, next item, please.
Yes, next item is proposed action plan and next steps. This will be presented by Tammy Sallie Jones, City Manager.
Madam City Manager, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning, everyone. Um, uh, glad to have had, um, Matthew and Doug and Dr. Paxton on today. Um, it definitely speaks volumes to, um, what is going on in Fulton County and in the city of South Fulton. Um, in regards to next steps, my recommendations, uh, pretty much piggyback on the things that they have already talked about. Um, you know, we still have a mask mandate in place in the city of South Fulton. And of course, I would encourage, um, uh, all individuals, uh, public as well as our employees to continue to wear your mask. And, uh, you know, in our city facilities, masks are required. Um, so we will continue to, uh, keep that practice in place and encourage any of our staff that if they need additional masks, we have those available, we have all PPE available items, uh, uh, for them. Um, I would also, uh, I plan to continue to do our teleworking, uh, policy that we are currently doing. Um, I sent an email out to the council, uh, Monday night and teleworking was instituted on Tuesday. And I am going to continue that teleworking, uh, right now through, uh, Monday, January the tenth. That, that means that our city facilities will be closed to the public and staff who can will be, uh, teleworking from home. And we have tried to provide all available resources, uh, to those individuals, um, that needed, for example, technology equipment. Um, the next thing in regards to the message regarding vaccinations, the council back in October approved funds, uh, for a vaccination incentive that we will be using our American Rescue Plan funds for. I will be working with Chief Jones, Chief Chad Jones and Sterling Jones in the, um, Fire Rescue Department to begin rolling out our vaccination incentives. Uh, right now, uh, we are looking at providing gift cards, uh, to individuals to get their first and second shots. And of course, you know, if funds are available, which I would highly recommend that we do that, that people, that we provide, uh, incentives for individuals to get their booster shots as well. Uh, but primarily, we wanna focus on those underserved areas within our city limits and right now encourage, uh, those who are unvaccinated to get un- to get vaccinated and to pro- provide incentives for first and second shots. Those will also, uh, be eligible for our employees as well. And then the last thing I wanted to discuss, um, we have a, uh, January four swearing-in, um, uh, event on the, that the council last, uh, time we met voted to, um, approve. And, uh, our staff, uh, of committee have been meeting to put those plans together. Um, and it's our recommendation, uh, that we still have that, but it'd be limited as far as public access in order to prevent the spread of the virus. And, um, strictly be, uh, you know, for our mayor-elect and the, the, the council-elect. Um, and then of course, as I mentioned, you know, the council members for twenty twenty-two. Um, and it will be at City Hall in our break room. And the break room does have limited space and again, that is the reason why we are in, uh, discouraging people from coming, if at all possible, to City Hall. We will do a hybrid approach and you can view it online, uh, through our YouTube channel. Um, and at this point, Mayor, those are the main areas that I wanted to go through. Mask mandate, continuing our teleworking, um, to, uh, discuss our vaccination incentives that will be funded through the American Rescue Plan money and then also the January four swearing-in, uh, event.
Okay, before I go to, uh, the, the Mayor Pro Tim, if you would allow me to, uh, Madam City, City Manager, a couple of things. Uh, one is, um, you know, I believe that we should put, we should not, uh, uh, put debt over profits uh, as we go through and figure out what are the strategies gonna be as we go forward. However, uh, one thing I think is, is all in short that we should emphasize, and that is communication, communication, information to our constituency, uh, if, on a regular basis as to where we are in our city, uh, in terms of COVID. Everybody doesn't have a computer, everybody don't have time to, to log into these kinds of conversations. And I think that the Communication Department needs to kind of, uh, uh, adjust themselves so that they can, they can have continuous communication as to where we are, uh, in terms of, uh, of, of the science and where we are in terms of what's happening in our city. Uh, the thing is, um, I think that you have a temporary telemarketing, uh, I mean, teleworking system in, involved right now.
Yes, sir, we do have a tele- teleworking policy, but yes, sir.
But I think that you should, you should monitor that very closely. Uh, and, uh, and see how that, we need to do it longer to see how it, how it's affecting us. You know, one of the reasons why a lot of people are getting jobs elsewhere, other places is because these jobs are allowing them to, uh, to tele- telework.
Mm-hmm.
That's an inviting, that's an inviting situation tomorrow. So I would say that we need to, we need to, we need to monitor that and, uh, and, and be careful of it. And closing out, uh, staff is so very important to us. And I know we've had things, that we have policies where if you're not vaccinated, that you must take tests frequently and things of that nature. I think anything we can do to continue to protect staff, uh, I've said, I've said today and I've said it all along. That is, if we cannot, we cannot deliver the services, uh, that we have pledged to deliver without, without staff. Dr. Paxton and Oles have hit on it today about talking about staff shortages, uh, in, in, in having to deliver the service for, uh, for, uh, for this, this, this pandemic. So I would say to you, be very, very cognizant about where our staff is and how healthy our staff is. Uh, because we have to deliver those services.
Yes, sir. And, and I did wanna add, you know, one of the reasons why I'm recommending that we continue teleworking through January the tenth is with, you know, us being in this season. is with, you know, us being in this season of Christmas and New Year's. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm well aware that our staff are traveling and around family and friends. And we really want to be able to uh ha, have a staff population that is safe. So uh, I, you know, will be instituting a uh administrative policy where we ask our staff to test uh before they embark upon our city facilities. So that is the reason why we want to give them some additional time uh to be able to go and get tested. And that will be for vaccinated as well as unvaccinated employees.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'm gonna recognize the Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sally Jones, these uh incentives that you're giving out, are you ensuring that they are for residents only of the city of South Fulton? And we're not giving out incentives for people who come away across town or from other cities and other counties?
Yes, ma'am. The intent is to make every effort that we can to limit these funds, which are specifically, you know, for the city of South Fulton, uh, for the vaccination incentives to be specifically for our, our residents that live within our city of South Fulton city limits.
Okay. Is there anywhere possible that we could find out where the resource is and we could order home test kits for our residents? Or maybe we could limit it to our vulnerable population, our seniors, so we can make sure that if council members can identify the seniors in their community, we could get these test kits to this, to the seniors?
Yes, I can work with our staff to see if we can do that. I mean, I have actually just recently on yesterday, um, someone reached out to me that uh has a resource uh in, in regards to home tests. And we can definitely, you know, reach out to that particular company or that individual again, as well as working with our emergency management team.
If we could just find out what resource Fulton County is using to order home test kits, we could probably get it from that resource, because it seems like they're gonna limit who can get them. And if we could just order whatever they're gonna give us, that's fine. But we need to, uh, if we could tap into that resource and order more, that would be great, so we could get it out to our residents.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, any more hands raised? I don't see any.
Yeah, I'm not finished.
All right. All right, ma'am, I did not mean to interrupt you.
I'm sorry. Um, uh, and please, I'm sorry, I'm, be patient, I'm trying to struggle through these questions. Um, teller, teleworking, can you make sure that when you, when staff is allowed to telework, that they are, remain accessible? Because I've spoken with you several times where I've tried to call, um, you know, I'm not gonna call anyone out, because it's not appropriate. But I've tried to call pertinent staff, uh, directors and they're not answering phones. Um, and you know, it's, it's, uh, we need staff. I want staff to work from home, but we need people to be accessible, not only to the elected officials, but also to the public. So we gotta make sure that when we telecommute, that staff is still able to still, I mean, uh, people are still able to receive service, internal and external.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll make sure of that.
Um, lastly, for the swearing-in on the fourth, uh, is there any way that you all could consider staggering the swearing-in? Because having everybody in, in the same, at, at one time, that is real dangerous. I mean, I, after contracting COVID, I wouldn't wish this on anybody. And just having everybody in one place at one time is just, is, is just too risky. So is there any way that y'all could consider staggering elected officials? Not only limiting it, but making sure people just staggered in, give them certain times they could come in and be sworn in.
Yes, that's actually um an idea that the staff and I have been meeting about this week. And I mean, definitely, I, I have no problem with that. And I'm, I'm sure, you know, I, I, I don't like to speak on anybody's behalf, but I know one of the council-elect um actually shared that idea with me, so I, I definitely appreciate that.
Mayor, do we need to make a motion that we have staggered swearing-in times? And do we need to vote on that?
Uh, uh, Parliament, the Parliamentarian, I think, would agree that you can, you can make a motion on anything. Uh, so if that's what you'd like to, if you get a second.
Okay. Um, I would like to move that we have staggered swearing-in times on um uh January fourth for the swearing-in of council members.
Is there a second? Hearing none, that, that most feels a lack of four votes.
I did get a second.
You did get a second? I didn't hear us. Who, let me for the record, who's the second?
Rob.
Rob is the second. Okay, we gotta, we gotta properly move the second in the discussion. Mr. Clerk, do you see any, any council person's hands raised?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Roll call vote, uh, with a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Willis, second by Councilmember Rob to authorize staggered swearing-in times for the January fourth uh ceremony. Uh, Councilmember Rob.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Uh, and the other members, I don't believe they're present, but Councilmember Gil Yard. Councilmember Khalid. Councilmember Baker. That item is approved for the zero.
Okay, that motion passes. You can continue, uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
I would like to make another motion to, um, we, some, several of us have met, have caucus with uh the uh newly-elected council members. And in light of the um, the Omicron variant, we, we think it's best at this time best to make the, uh, postpone the in-person swearing-in. Um, so I would like to also make a motion to postpone uh the January um eighth swearing-in. Um, I know that there are gonna be a meeting called on the fourth um to discuss other specifics around it. But at this time, I would like to go ahead and postpone the um January eighth swearing-in. That's my motion.
Well, uh, let me just get, I heard a second.
You heard a point of order.
Okay, go ahead.
Can't, can't the city man, yes, yes, sir, can't the city manager just make that decision? To postpone it, because as Dave goes on, you know, uh, she has the ability to postpone it, right?
I,
Mayor, that's point of order as opposed to state a violation. I didn't, I, that's not a violation. I didn't make a violation, but I made a motion.
Pardon me, pardon me.
Miss, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, let me, let me handle that. And he, he stated his effort. Let me get, get an answer to his obvious question. Uh, uh, I think the city manager has the opportunity to do a lot of things, but when it comes to something like this that affects the, affects the whole council, and Miss, Miss, uh, Miss Sally Jones, please chime in. Uh, uh, I think it would be more relevant for them to vote on it. Do you agree?
Yes, sir, but I also think that um this conversation would best be handled if we were to include all of the newly-elected council members as well.
Okay. Point I take. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, let me, let me, let me acknowledge, uh, Councilwoman Rob.
Uh, first of all, thank you, City Manager Jones, for that. Given that we are roughly one week out um on this public event, what would you recommend is the best course of action to make sure the newly-elected are um involved in this conversation? Um, because take the holiday off for less, you know, less than a week.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I would think that maybe if the council or the mayor-elect wanted to call a special call meeting next week, the first of next week, and based upon, you know, the advertisements, I believe, and Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the first availability that would be would either be um the January the fifth, if I'm not mistaken, based upon my understanding.
Given that the event is scheduled for the eighth, that's three days, have you had any um conversation with Mayor-elect regarding, I know he's not on the call, but have you had any discussions about calling such a meeting?
We've had some discussions about calling the meeting and from my understanding, um, and it was really, it wasn't a phone conversation, it was really uh through text message. I believe he still would like to have the meeting for January the fourth. Um, he did send an email to the current sitting council. Um, and I know he included the council-elect asking about having a meeting right after the swearing-in.
Okay, um, and just one, okay, thank you, that would be good. And just one um other question. In terms of communication, I know um different people have asked me, we, we seem to have two different communication channels. Um, you know, I, I rely on the communications that comes from the Communication Department. I know Mayor-elect has um different information um on his individual site. How do we sync that not to confuse the public? Can the, can the communication staff work on that?
Yes, I mean, I, I think anything formal in regards to activities and information should be coming from the city's Communication Department. And I can have those conversations and, and express that.
Uh, please do, because um as it stands, we're moving forward with the January fourth, there's no mention on, on his site relative that, but the eighth of eight. So I just, again, people have asked me about events that, no, I, I wasn't aware of it too. It was brought to my attention, so I just think we gotta sync up our communications. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rob. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Miss Willis, I see your hand up again.
So Mayor Pro, I mean, um, Ms. Sally Jones, as I sit here uh with COVID, I'm gonna ask you some pointed questions, because I wanna be transparent with the public and I hate playing games. Isn't it true that it was this very council to vote to have the in-person event on the eighth?
Yes.
Isn't it true that you have been in constant communication, not only with Mary Leck, but also the council member-elect? And I would like to remind you, this is a council member, city manager, government, where council makes decisions. So isn't it true you have not only been in communication with the council members-elect, but also the mayor-elect? And I am in communication right now where I have one council member-elect asking me to make the motion to postpone the eighth.
Mm-hmm.
So isn't it true, I've spoken with them and you have gotten communication with them telling you that they do not want the in-person event on the eighth?
Yes, so uh, and, and, and I don't wanna call any names, but
I haven't called any names, but I know that this is taking place, because I am getting communication from the council member-elect that they have advised you, that they have asked you to postpone the eighth.
Well, I mean, I can't make that decision. The council would make that decision. The two council-elects have expressed to me that they only wanted to do the swearing-in on January the fourth. They do not have a desire to do the January eighth event. Because that affects them as newly-elected and soon-to-be council members, I think that they should vote if that is the way that they desire to go. And yes, we did, the council did vote to have it on January the eighth, but that was before we got the information about the rise in the COVID um cases in Fulton County.
So now that you have two, the Mary Leck who is COVID-positive and sick, and you have a council member who's, who's COVID-positive and sick, you have all the information from Fulton County Board of Health who have advised you that the Omicron variant is taking over double, triple digits, the Delta variant. It was this very council who voted to have an in-person um uh swearing-in. You are now recommending that we wait until the fourth to cancel this? When you have also spoken with the council members-elect who have advised you to postpone that, to propose, to po, postpone this? And not only that, you have heard, we have, there's several miscommunication out there in the public. And, you know, we are hearing players from other cities who have postponed their variant. Why is it the largest city in the South Fulton region who have the uh most vulnerable population, because we have the highest population? Why are we playing games? If you've heard from the two council member-elect, you got all this information saying that the Omicron, Omicron variant is overtaking Delta. You got two elected officials that are currently positive, one that's experienced. Since, since I can barely talk through this conversation, why are you recommending that we wait? When you already have gotten communication from council members-elect who's impacted by this saying that we should postpone it? Mayor, at this time, I move to postpone the in-person swearing-in for January eighth.
Your second? Hearing a second that fails for lack of four votes.
Thank you for the record. I did what I, what I think what was best for this community.
Okay. Ms. Sally Jones, do you have anything else?
No, sir, I do not.
All right, if anything, nothing else, I would uh make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is this, is this such a motion?
I moved it with John. Take, take it.
The copy moved and uh seconded that we adjourned the meeting. Mr. Clerk, let's vote, please.
Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Rob.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Hello. That is, that motion is approved. We are adjourned at eleven oh four PM.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for, for being here this morning. We will be doing a uh meeting, what, ten o'clock meeting? At one o'clock uh with Fulton County, I mean, yeah, with Fulton County, if you chose to join in, please do so. Thank you all so much and have a great day.